I'd like to call this. I'd like to call this meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, will you call the roll?
Mr. Harper? Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that six of our school board members are present for tonight's meeting, along with our Division Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our School Board Attorney Ms. Nancy Reeves, our School Board Clerk Carolyn Bowers, along with members of our Division Leadership Team and members of our school community, welcome tonight. At this time, I'll turn things over to our student liaison, Mr. Thomas Perry, to make some introductions.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have Kijana Harris from, he's an eighth grader at Lindsay Middle School. And before he reads the Pledge of Allegiance, he would like to read a little poem that he brought.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be reading a poem called "Life Is" by Mother Teresa. Life is an opportunity, benefit from it. Life is beauty, admire it. Life is a dream, realize it. Life is a challenge, meet it. Life is a duty, complete it. Life is a game, play it. Life is a promise, fulfill it. Life is sorrow, overcome it. Life is a song, sing it. Life is a struggle, accept it. Life is a tragedy, confront it. Life is adventure, dare it. Life is luck, make it. Life is too precious, do not destroy it. Life is life, fight for it. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris, for being with us tonight. Do you have some family with you tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to make some introductions?
Yes. Okay. This is my mother, my father, my great-grandmother. On the back row is my cousin and my grandmother. And over there, these two lovely ladies, my two principals, Mrs. Burry Wright and Mrs. Montgomery.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you very much. And so you're an eighth grader at Lindsay, and you'll be going on, where will you go to high school next year?
Hampton High.
I think you're gonna be welcome with open arms. Awesome. Good luck to you. Have a wonderful summer, and good luck to you at Hampton High School next year.
Thank you so much.
Before you sit down, Mr., are you considering the IB program?
I was at first, but I didn't turn my paper in no time.
But you have another opportunity next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go for it, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much for sharing your words of inspiration tonight.
Thank you.
We move to our recognitions tonight, and I'll call on our Executive Director of Marketing and Public Relations, Ms. Diana Gallata, and she will be assisted tonight by Mrs. Smith.
My pleasure to be here to recognize Sprattly Gilded Center for earning the Grammy Music Educators Blue Ribboned School Award. This award recognizes superior performing ensembles as evidenced by the district performance assessment rating from each of the top performing groups of each ensemble course taught at the school. Pamela Young is the choral director, and Michael Bigelow is the band director. Ken Crum is the principal. Ms. Young and Mr. Bigelow, if you would come forward, please.
Yeah, we'd like you to come on up.
I have the history school board. I am the founder and president of Sprattly Gilded Center, which is the music association with the Blue Ribboned School Award, signed by our chair, Marcia Muggler, and our superintendent school's honor director. Thanks so much for all you do. Appreciate it. And here are the other principals. We hope you're outstanding.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
And I do want to recognize Kelly D. Is he still here? Music Specialist. Thank you very much. Hampton City Schools is proud to announce that we have three of only 1,000 Gates Millennium Scholars nationally this year. Through this extraordinary honor, our students will receive scholarships for both their undergraduate and graduate studies, as well as personal and professional development through leadership programs and academic support throughout their college career. The Gates Millennium Scholars Program, one of the most competitive scholarships in the country, promotes academic excellence and provides an opportunity for talented students to reach their highest potential. Two of our Gates Scholars attend Bethel High School. One of our Gates Scholar is Brianna Craylick. She was here, she did have to leave early, so I do want to just read a little bit about her. She is a Gates Millennium Scholarship recipient and Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship finalist. She has a 3.64 GPA and scored 27 on her ACT. She looks forward to pursuing a degree in mass communications with a concentration in journalism. In her free time, Brianna enjoys being on YouTube and hopes one day to start her own video blog. Brianna will attend Virginia Commonwealth University in the fall. Congratulations, Brianna. I think I saw Joshua Owusu Koromoa here. Are you here?
He's in there right here.
Come on up, Joshua. Joshua is a scholar-athlete playing for the BHS soccer team. He has a GPA of 4.01. Joshua plans to study pre-med at the College of William &amp; Mary in the fall. Congratulations, Joshua, on what a great, exciting opportunity for you, and we know you're gonna do so well in college and beyond, because I know you have plans for beyond, so best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. His principals are here, too, Mr. Ralph Saunders and Mr. Hopson. Our third recipient in the Gates Millennium Scholar Program is Takari Rollins, who obviously is a crabber, and has his own cheering section. Takari has a cumulative GPA of 3.64 and is graduating with highest honors. He's Vice President of the Debate Team, Secretary of the Chrome Club, and a member of the Track Team and AF ROTC Drill Team. He has received an ROTC Academic Award and Leadership School Award. He also mentors young adolescent males and prepares food for the homeless at a local church. He won first place in the Hampton High School Talent Show last year, and he auditioned for NBC's "The Voice" in 2015. His future plans include attending Morehouse College and eventually becoming a doctor in the Air Force. It is my pleasure to award you with the certificate for the Gates Millennium Scholar. What an exciting time for you, and I don't know, "The Voice" sounds sort of cool, too. I'd love to hear about that. But congratulations to you. You know you're gonna show Hampton well out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And his principals, Mrs. Tiffany Hardy and Mr. Kevin Davis are here as well. It is now my pleasure to recognize our valedictorians and salutatorians, beginning with Bethel High School. The 2016 valedictorian for Bethel High School is Rachel Dobbins. Come on forward, Rachel. Rachel is graduating with a cumulative GPA of 4.51, an SAT score of 2070, and 34 composite on the ACT. She's received numerous honors, including Early College Scholar, Outstanding Senior Academic Award, and the Academic Achievement Award. Exhibiting the traits of great leadership, Rachel's involvement in Bethel's extracurricular activities, as well as the community, is exemplary. Her positions include Managing Editor and Submissions Manager for Bethel's state award-winning Polaris Literary Magazine, Marching Band Flute Section Leader, Girl Scouts of America Council Delegate, and National Honor Society Member. Rachel has been accepted to both the College of William &amp; Mary and Spelman College. She has received over $200,000 in scholarships. In the fall, Rachel will attend the College of William &amp; Mary, where she will double-major in neuroscience and biochemistry. We go way back. One of the Mary Peake kids in Sprattly, and just all around, a wonderful student that we know is gonna just do so well at William &amp; Mary, so, so very well. I don't even know what to say. Anyway, congratulations to you. Amaria, did I say that right?
Yes.
I practiced all day, with Mr. Saunders' help. Amaria has a GPA of 4.5, an SAT score of 1,800. As a Bruin, she has challenged herself with rigorous courses in both Advanced Placement and Governor's Health Science. In addition to her intellectual strength, she is an exemplary citizen, thoughtful, caring, and respectful. Her numerous awards and scholarships represent remarkable academic achievement, as well as civic service and involvement in the community. She has also participated in international missions work and other faith-based commitments. She has devoted many hours, peer tutoring, and has served on the Superintendent's Advisory Council, as Treasurer for the National Honor Society, and Chaplain for the Health Occupation Student Organization. Amaria is passionate about band and serves as the Woodwind Captain, Clarinet Section Leader, and Drum Major of the Mighty Marching Bruins Band. The College of William &amp; Mary, Spelman College, the University of Richmond, Salem College, and the University of Virginia were a few of her college options. She has earned over $500,000 in merit scholarships. She has chosen to become a member of the Tribe, where she plans to major in Biology pre-med as a William &amp; Mary Scholar. Also seen you around for a long time as well. So proud of you doing so well, and I know William &amp; Mary is going to love having you there. So enjoy being at the Tribe and being a part of it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. And their principal is also here, Mr. Saunders and Mr. Hopson. Thank you for being here.
And Ms. Garrity is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Garrity, I didn't see you. And family is here, too, as well. Any other family of other award winners that I missed? Okay. I know there's a cheering section back here, but, okay, all right. Now, we are going to move on to Hampton High School. The valedictorian for Hampton High School, class of 2016, is Judy Chin. Judy Chin has a GPA of 4.66. She is an International Baccalaureate Diploma candidate. As an involved crabber, she is President of Mu Alpha Theta, a member of the Scholastic Bowl, the International Club, Kiets, FBLA, Spanish Clubs, Spanish Honor Society, and the National Honor Society. She speaks, excuse me, Chinese, English, and Spanish. Her community activities include volunteering at the YMCA and public library. Judy was accepted to University of Virginia, William &amp; Mary, and Virginia Commonwealth University. She is selected to attend the University of Virginia in the fall. I'm not quite sure how you even calculate 4.66 and then do all those activities, but congratulations to you. Very well done, and I know you're gonna do very well. Thank you so much. Congratulations. The salutatorium for Hampton High School is Anna Patterson. Anna is graduating with a GPA of 4.61, an SAT score of 1,990. Anna is a dual-enrolled student at Thomas Nelson Community College and Christopher Newport University, where she is a member of the CNU French Club. She also participated in the Virginia Summer Residential Governor's School for Medicine and Health Sciences at VCU. She served as a Sister Cities of Hampton Board Member on the Superintendent's Advisory Board and the Hampton High School Principal's Advisory Board. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, Kiets, the International Club, and is on the HCS Sailing, Swim, and Dive Teams. She is a Head Instructor at Youth Sailing Virginia Incorporated. This fall, Anna will continue to lead and serve through the Honors and Presidential Leadership Program at Christopher Newport University. I am very honored to be presenting this to you, Anna. Congratulations to you, and I know you're gonna do so well at CNU. And her principals Tiffany Hardy and Kevin Davis are here as well. Now, we're going to move on to Kickitane. The valedictorian at Kickitane High School is Emily Rhodes. Emily has a GPA of 4.59 and scored 1,890 on the SAT. Emily is an AP Scholar with Distinction, and she is a member of the Math, Science, Social Studies, English, and the National Honor Society. So you're in all of those Honor Societies for all those subjects. Did I read that correctly? Okay, great. She has served her community through projects such as Relay for Life, Operation Christmas Child, Salvation Army Bell Ringing, and the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank. As a member of the KHS Swim, Dive, and Sailing Teams, Emily has formed many friendships with her teammates and appreciates the guidance of her coaches. She has been a member of the Kiets Club for four years and held an officer position for three of those years. She has been accepted to James Madison University, Holland University, Randolph-Macon College, Old Dominion University, and the University of Virginia, and has been offered over $200,000 in academic scholarships. In the fall, Emily will attend the University of Virginia, majoring in Environmental Science. Very impressive. It's definitely my honor to present this certificate to you for valedictorian Kickitane High School. Congratulations. Kickitane's salutatorian is Jeremy Nelson.
Hey, Jeremy.
Jeremy has a GPA of 4.57. He scored 34 on the ACT and 2,250 on the SAT. This outstanding SAT score awards him the status of National Merit Commended Student, and he is an Advanced Placement Scholar with Distinction. Jeremy serves as the President of the Youth and Government Club, as well as the Model United Nations Club. He was elected House Speaker Pro Tem for Model General Assembly. He progressed to the Supreme Court level of the Model Judiciary Program in the Virginia Supreme Court Building, where, along with his sister Claire, won the case and was named Best Attorney. Jeremy has been selected to attend the YMCA Conference on National Affairs in North Carolina for the past two years. He has conducted a research mentorship project to study the effects of sea level rise on salt marsh bird populations. He is on the Council Board for the KHS English Honor Society and a member of the Social Studies Honor Society. He is the drum major for the marching band and is co-captain of the varsity tennis team. This fall, as Jeremy heads off to college, he will do so with over $920,000 in grants and scholarships. He's been accepted to Princeton University, Cornell University, the University of Virginia, the College of William &amp; Mary, George Washington University, University of Richmond, University of Washington, James Madison University, and Shenandoah University. Jeremy, you can clap for that. Jeremy will attend Princeton University to pursue a degree in politics, or with the Woodrow Wilson School of Public and International Affairs, with minors in Near Eastern Studies and Environmental Studies. I'm just a little disappointed you didn't hit the million-dollar mark, but that's okay. Very impressive, three pages, I believe. It's my pleasure to present this certificate to you for being salutatorian at Kickitane High School, and we know you're gonna do great things.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jeremy, your dad's here as well.
Yes.
And Mr. Mortica from Kickitane. Okay, now, we're going to move on to Phibas High School. Is Mateo Burt here? I don't see him. Okay. Mateo Burt is a Phibas High School valedictorian with a 4.62 GPA and 1,950 SAT score. In addition to his classes at Phibas, Mateo has also attended the New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology, and is participating in a mentorship program with NASA Langley Research Center. His accolades are numerous, including Induction into Math Honor Society and National Honor Society, and achieving an AP Scholar Award of Distinction. He's been involved in Scholastic Bowl robotics clubs and is on the sailing team. He founded the Thrive Christian Club at Phibas. He's involved with his church, serving as student leader of the Band for the Liberty Student Ministry Band, playing drums for the college ministry, and participating in the local rescue mission to feed the homeless. He participates in Kai-Alpha Student Ministry Choir at Liberty as well. He volunteers for the Machin Elementary School Food Pantry and with the Boys and Girls Club. He's also been on two international mission efforts. In the fall, he will attend the University of Virginia, where he plans to major in Computer Science and obtain a degree in Theology Online. And our salutatorian is Casey Cordner. Is Casey here?
Yes.
Hi, Casey. Casey's graduating with a GPA of 4.52 and an SAT score of 1,760. Casey is an aspiring engineer who has taken advantage of the Project Lead the Way Engineering Curriculum at Phibas. She augmented those engineering courses by completing the Scientific Programming Strand at the Governor's School for Science and Technology. During her two years there, she did research in efficient technologies for collecting scientific data from test articles at NASA Langley Research Center, and investigated how the crew member in a two-man racing sailboat could improve performance. She's a member of the Phibas Sailing Team, Varsity Swim Team, and is first baseman and pitcher for the Varsity Softball Team. She also participated in the Scholastic Bowl at Phibas as the Vice President, and was a member of the 2014 First Robotics Team. Her character and leadership were rewarded with the DAR Good Citizen Award, selection to the Youth Leadership Institute, and being named Captain of the Phibas Swim and Sailing Team. She's a member of the National Honor Society, has served as the President and Secretary of the Math Honor Society, and was named an AP Scholar. Outside of school, she volunteers at her church and for community events. She's also volunteered with the Port Emergency Winter Shelter Program, and helped with the Fort Monroe Authority Ghost Walks. Casey plans to study computer engineering on the campus of Old Dominion University. Congratulations, Casey. I'm honored to present you with this certificate for being salutatorian at Phibas High School, and I'm so glad another woman is joining the ranks of engineering, so good luck to you. Casey's principal, Mr. Hudson, and Ms. Hudson, and Ms. Garrity are here. Did I miss anyone? And her parents, where are your parents? Right there. Okay. Thank you very much. It is now my pleasure to introduce Board Chair, Mrs. Martha Mugler, who will recognize our student representatives and retiring school board members.
I want to congratulate again the valedictorians and salutatorians and our Gates Millennium Scholars. Those students are so outstanding, and it really makes us proud, as a school board, to hear about the incredible accomplishments of our young people. I'll offer additional congratulations to them. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize our student representative and our student representative The primary responsibility of our student representatives is to provide us a voice of students when we come to deliberate on issues and policies that, in particular, would affect students and the student body. And so, tonight, we recognize both Thomas Perry and Sierra Lewis, who have done an outstanding job and been very engaged in the issues affecting our students. I'd first like to recognize Mr. Thomas Perry, if you'll come forward. Mr. Perry is a graduating senior from Kickitane High School, and some of Thomas's activities include cross-country, indoor track, ROTC, and he participates in the Hampton City Youth Commission, and we are proud to share that Thomas has enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. And we know, Thomas, that you will represent us well, and you will serve our country well. We are so proud that you've chosen to serve our country and protect our freedoms. Congratulations, Thomas, and thank you again for your service this year. There's something for you, in recognition of your service, and a little note from me. Thank you so much for your service. And if you want to stay up here while we call up your partner in crime, Sierra Lewis, can you come forward? Sure. Thomas, you want to say?
I do want to say something real quick before we introduce Sierra. That has been an honor serving the city of Hampton, and I'm so happy that I grew up here. My family grew up here. I'm so happy to be a part of this. So happy to be a part of the city, its history, and everything else. I've made lifelong friends here, and I definitely plan on coming back.
That's absolutely what we love to hear. Thank you, Thomas. Sierra is a student senior graduating from Phoebus High School, and she serves as our alternate student representative. But these students have really partnered well together this year, and so we've gotten to share a lot of time with Sierra as well. She's been active in the SCA, the PTA, the German Club, the Drama Club, all at Phoebus High School. She participates in community activities, including the Hampton Youth Commission, the Hampton Violence Coalition, and a summer camp at the Hampton Community Center. She's also involved in her church. Sierra earned a scholarship from The Links Incorporated. I think that's among several scholarships that she was awarded this year, but that's the one we know about. And she will be attending George Mason University in the fall and aspires to study law. So, congratulations, Sierra. We are so proud of both of you. Did you all have family here tonight?
Yes, I know. I saw Sierra's mom.
That's my mom.
You all want to say something?
Okay. Well, first of all, I thank all of you all for giving me this opportunity, especially the board, to serve the wonderful students of Hampton City Schools. It's been a complete honor, and I plan to continue to represent Hampton City Schools as I go into my next journey in life. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. You didn't say you were coming back here, but you...
Eventually.
We're trying to hold you to that. We probably want you to come back here. Congratulations to both of you, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to recognize two retiring school board members for their outstanding service to the school board and to our community. Monica Smith, you want to come forward? You just may just sit down, but come back up here if you would. Monica's been a member of our school board since 2012. As an active PTA member and past president of the Hampton Council PTA and an engineer by trade, she tutors and mentors students across the division and has been a most conscientious school board member about visiting each school in the district at least two times every year, always following up with a detailed personal note to each building principal. She's been an exemplary school board member. Mrs. Smith has represented the board on the Town and Gown Committee and the Board for WHRO and has served as our delegate to the Virginia School Board Association Delegate Assembly. She's openly represented the opinions of our students and our parents, and we are going to miss her strict attention to policy and contract detail and genuine care for all of our students. Mrs. Smith, do you have some family members in the audience?
I do.
Would you all stand up and let us recognize you, please? And thank you for sharing, Monica, with us for the last four years. Monica, did you want to say it?
I do. I actually have it written. Attention to detail, right? I don't want to forget anything. Plus, I got to speak longer than Mr. Pearson. I just know I'm going to mess up if I didn't write it down. It's really been a true honor serving on the Hampton City School Board, and I'm really humbled by the fact that I was entrusted to make the decisions affecting our most valuable resource, our kids. And I really hope I met the expectations of the voters that showed their faith in me. I'll always have a passion for our schools, knowing that, you know, that's really the key to a strong community and essential for the future, really, for all of us. So, I thank everyone who's been worked, my fellow school board members, and all the staff of Hampton City Schools, who really all together always had the kids at the center of all the decisions. I'm just really honored that we've done that and are tremendously supportive of community members and, of course, students and families. I specifically want to thank my family, my husband Kevin, my daughter Brooke, my son Hayden, because without them, the positive support at home, I would never have been able to do this. And for that matter, if it wasn't for my kids, I probably wouldn't have done this, because the whole reason I did it was to be a parent voice on the board. I'm leaving it at a very exciting time for our schools. I think this is the first year during my time on the board that we actually got, didn't have to consider difficult budget cuts and got to give a raise to the staff. So, I'm leaving on a good note with that. Plus, the one-to-one initiative. We're going to have laptops and iPads in the hands of every middle schooler and high schooler in the city. And the classrooms are going to transform. I'm excited about that. And I know one of our best board decisions was the hiring of our new superintendent. So, I know great things are in store for us. I'm not sure where I'm really going to be led next, but I'm excited to venture out into where I can be involved and serve our community more. So, just let me know if you need me. Thank you.
And we do have a little plaque in recognition, Monica, for your service to our schools and our students. Thank you for your service. And Mr. Dave Pearson, if you'll come forward. Dave Pearson is our current Vice Chair of the Board, and he has served on our board since 2007. He previously served as principal at Bethel High School. Among his many, many positions he held in Hampton City Schools prior to his retirement. And he used his experience as a school administrator to effectively govern this school division. And we are going to miss his calm demeanor and level head, especially during student discipline and employee grievance matters. Mr. Pearson made frequent visits to schools, and in particular, Bridgeport Academy, where he was an exceptional advocate. We have a fan out there. An exceptional advocate for the Performance Learning Center, always. Mr. Pearson was on the Career and Technical Education Advisory Board for us and the PPOC, Procurement Board, Joint City and School Division Board. His genuine care for our city and our students has been unquestionable. Congratulations, Mr. Pearson.
Monica did such a great job. Can I borrow that, please? I don't have anything written down. Good evening. First of all, I want to acknowledge some family members that I did ask to come tonight, because normally you don't get a chance to meet my family members. First of all, my wife Elaine is in the audience, and she can stand. She's been very supportive of me over the last nine years, and as she has watched me work on the board, I think she fully understands the role of the school board member. Next to her, I have my daughter Kim and her husband Kwame, and their two young daughters Yasmeen and Luna. They're both educators, and I asked them to be here tonight. I want to thank some people who have made it such a pleasure for me to serve on this board. Needless to say, we have some outstanding parents and students. I want to thank the administrators and teachers and support staff on all the schools for the work that they do every day, trying to ensure that the students reach their highest potential. And tonight, you saw the culmination of that in these seniors onstage. Some of the administrators I see sitting out here have nurtured these students from elementary school through middle school and high school. We have an excellent division leadership team led by, I think, the most capable superintendent in the state of Virginia, Dr. Jeffrey Smith. We appreciate their executive leadership in achieving the goals of the 2020 Strategic Plan and trying to raise the academic level of all of our students. They do an excellent job. A lot of people don't know the work that they do every day. They simply look at their name, excuse me, and their title. Last but not least, we have an excellent school board. They are dedicated and committed. They always put students first, and they want this system to be the very best system in the state. When it comes to budget time, they always protect the classroom at all costs, because as Dr. Smith often says, "Our core business is teaching and learning." Thank you for the recognition.
Just a little plaque to recognize your service, Mr. Pearson, for your service to the students and the school division and the school board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Pearson mentioned his son-in-law, Dr. Kwame Brown, who's here, and his father's actually Dr. Carlton Brown, who was the former Vice Chairman of Hampton School Board. So, there's a close connection to Hampton School Division and that whole family. And I see his beautiful granddaughters want to wave and say hello to you, granddaddy. Thank you all very much, Elaine. Thank you for sharing, Mr. Pearson, with us and allowing him to do the great work that he's done for Hampton City Schools. That concludes our awards and recognitions tonight. Thank you so much. So, we do actually have some business tonight, but we're going to move on with, beginning with our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight consists of six items. Personnel report 16-12, the minutes of the school board meeting of May 4th, the minutes of the school board meeting of May 18th, the minutes of the public hearing of May 18th, the certification of the closed session and the certification of the, oops, the certification, certification of the closed session of May 4th and the certification of the closed session of May 18th. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to superintendent and staff reports, I'll turn things over to you, Dr. Smith, to take us through our staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start with our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Cajana, who will introduce our first report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, board members. Joining us tonight from the Department of Academic Advancement in Richmond is Ms. Ruth Grillo. She's here to provide an update on gifted education in Hampton City Schools. Ms. Grillo.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Smith, and members of the board. I think we're getting my presentation up, but I'd like to say that the gifted programs are how we get all these students started on these amazing journeys of academic excellence. And of course, every one of these is different. Always have a backup. Thank you. What we're going to do tonight is talk about the summary of our services, what we do, talk about some of the highlights from our curriculum so that you have a better idea of what we actually do in the classroom, talk about the Local Plan for Gifted Education, which is our guidance document, which is required from us by the state and has to be approved by the school board. Our Annual Report is a document submitted by the local council for gifted education, the Advisory Committee, which gets submitted to the superintendent and to the school board. And then we'll talk about that advisory committee and offer a chance for anyone who's interested to serve on that committee. We'll be welcome. When people think of Spratly in Hampton City Schools, they think, oh, maybe that's all the gifted program does. Well, really, we're in every elementary school and every middle school, as well as in Spratly. We serve our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade students. We serve the Gifted Resource Program, which takes us through grades three through eight. We do have Spratly as a full-time center for our more highly gifted students who need the most differentiated instruction. We have the Gifted Visual Arts Program, which is in all of the elementary and middle schools, and that goes through grades three through eight. And in our high schools, we have a number of choices. Everything from dual enrollment courses, virtual courses for students who may need something like a fifth year of Chinese Language Studies or something very specific. We do summer residential governor schools, and we had three students from Hampton accepted to those governor schools this year. We run the International Baccalaureate Program and our Governor's School for Science and Technology. So, it's sort of a continuum all the way through, starting with kindergarten and going through high school. We do have a very set curriculum that is content-based that we use for our Gifted Resource Program specifically, but also works through Spratly. We do critical thinking, problem-solving, real-world connections, creativity kinds of things. A lot of problem-solving, but we also work it through the content areas so that these students get their core content at a very advanced depth and a very expanded breadth to help them have a lot of exploratory opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise get. They are also given the chance to pursue independent studies, because many of these students have very strong passions in very particular areas of interest. This is a little bit about our science, and that habitats actually came up. It was in code. With our younger guys, this was first grade. We started a unit on habitats, and one of our teachers figured out that it still wasn't complicated and in-depth enough for our first graders. So, she invented an alien society coming to visit habitats on Earth and made the kids do everything from the coded letters that the aliens sent to them. So, it was taking everything one step further, and it was actually a mathematical code. It was really cool. These are pictures from the Chesapeake Bay Unit. We do cross-disciplinary activities, so there is some art involved in our flounder here. The other project has to do with erosion and watersheds. And as you will notice, our gifted kids do become very mischievous, just like any other kids. The picture on the left is a civil rights unit that we do with our fourth graders. The woman in the middle is a resident of Hampton who grew up here in the 40s and 50s and came to visit our classes to talk about her experiences growing up in Hampton and how things have changed. She related to her abilities as a quilter and how she expressed her emotions through quilts, and then talked through some stories in children's literature about quilts and civil rights. So, it is very multidisciplinary. The picture on the right has to do with a propaganda unit. We do carry a lot of technology with us, whether it's handheld microscopes or mini iPads or whatever we need to get a particular lesson across. So, these guys are using their iPads to interpret some propaganda as a way of helping students become more skeptical and discerning when they're reading news media. These are two of our math units. The one on the left is Algebraic Thinking that we start with our fourth graders and continue to the fifth graders. It's something called Hands-on Equations, and really helps the kids think very concisely about math and how math works. The kids on the right are working with something called GeoFlex. It's a beginning geometry tool that we use to give kids a sense of spatial geometry so that later on, they understand how those angles and connections work. And there's some artistic license in there, too. You can see on the left, one of the GeoFlex projects. The kids can tell you, oh, I made a rhombododecahedron today, or I made a stellated icosahedron today. So, there's really a lot of very advanced content knowledge and vocabulary that we use. The kids on the right are younger kids, and what they've done is taken a model of a cube that they've made and dipped it into a bubble solution. And what you get is something really unexpected. So, it's just a way of giving kids the joy of mathematical discovery. But I wanted to show particularly in these two pictures the intensity that the kids use when they're working on these projects and the joy that they have in doing what they're doing. The Local Plan, as I said, is our guidance document. We update it every four years, mostly because things change within four years, and it does need updating. It is approved by you, and you have a copy of that. We will be submitting it to the Virginia Department of Education for technical review next year. And basically, what they will do is go through and make sure that we've covered every letter of the law. So, I've tried to do that for you. It's, there's... The plan right now is running from now until 2020. It's, there's, the plan right now is running from now until 2020. These are some of the changes that we made. There's nothing really substantial, but a lot of tweaking. So we added specific goals, specific objectives to the goal section, which we hadn't had before, and those can include things like specifically working on the kindergarten curriculum as we get more and more kindergartners into the program, refining our eligibility processes a little bit, clarifying when retests and evaluations, reevaluations are considered. We always believe in giving kids a second chance to show us what we can, what they can do, but sometimes parents believe we should give them five or six chances every year. And with the limited staff, we've found that we kind of have to put a few more guidelines in to manage the influx of referrals. Can you go back? We did add a protocol for the evaluation of outside, evaluations done by outside agencies. We've now started to get parents who are going to local psychologists to have their kids tested because they didn't score high enough on our tests, and we'll just leave it at that. But it's something that's happening, and what we're finding is that the better we make our programs and the more students are enthusiastic and wanting to be in those programs, the harder parents are pushing to get their kids in the programs. We have no limits on how many kids can be in the programs, but we do want to make sure that our criteria are fair and equitable for every student in every case. And along with that, we do look at every student in Hampton City Schools in first grade and every student in Hampton City Schools in second grade, and then after that, referrals can be from anyone, anytime, from anywhere. And we've also made sure that the local plan complies with the wording in the template that's put out by the VDOE. So when you look at it, you may see redundancies, and that's because that's the way the VDOE wants it, basically. So we do what they ask us. The annual report is a different kind of report that we do every year that's created by the local advisory committee, and it basically describes how we've done what we said we were going to do in the local plan. So the advisory committee does a survey of our stakeholders. We do student surveys, parent surveys, to make sure that we're getting information from all over everywhere. It is required by the state, and we submit it to the superintendent and the school board in the spring of every year. So you have a copy of that, but that one doesn't have to be approved. It's for your information. Some of the highlights from that report, we had 1,234 stakeholders completed. We've started doing them online, trying to get more input. We found that 95% of our responding parents rated the delivery of services as adequate to excellent, up from 92% last year, so we're, you know, almost as far as we can go. But what's exciting about that is the ones who said it wasn't quite there yet were mostly the ones who wanted more services. So we're, I think, doing what we need to be doing for these students. 98% of the students said they learned an average amount to lots, and they had lots of exclamation points, and that's very important to us because that's really what it's all about, is making sure that these students are learning on an appropriately advanced and appropriately challenging level all the way through. This is an idea of the identification process that we go through. As of May, we, as of May, we had over 1,600 referrals. We do test students from non-Hampton City Schools, mostly from private schools, but also some home-school students, with the hope of that if they qualify, that we will get them in the Hampton City Schools pipeline. And each of those referrals, it sounds, oh, it's easy, it's a referral. Well, every one requires at least two ability tests, which is our objective way of measuring the student's capabilities. We have parent ratings, we have teacher ratings. We look at grades. We know that some students are underachievers, but we look at grades mostly to make sure that if we put them in a full-time program such as Spratly, that they will be able to handle that very increased rigor. With our younger kids, we may have interviews and work samples because it's very hard to measure the capabilities of our little guys, and we also do adjudications for all of our art portfolios. So it's a very intense but very thorough process. We do find that we are able to identify most of our students in first and second and third grade usually, and then after that, the few students who do get identified after that are usually students who've moved into the division from somewhere else. So the process seems to be working. The local advisory committee, the members are approved by the school board every couple of years. We post the minutes and the agendas on our gifted website. The meetings are always open to the public, and we'd always welcome you to come and join the discussion. They do, they are responsible for the annual survey of our stakeholders and for writing up that, the annual report. And this year, because this was a year for renewal for the local plan, the advisory committee spent a lot of time getting stakeholder input for the local plan to make sure that it still met the needs of the division. Our next steps, as good as we try to do, we know we can always make progress, continue to increase the numbers of identified students from underserved populations. That's always been one of my main goals, to make sure that every student in Hampton City Schools is treated equally and fairly in their opportunities to receive these services. We're continuing to tweak our curriculum. As I mentioned, now that we're getting more kindergarten students, we've had to focus more on that end of it. We would like to expand some of our services, including possibly a preschool program for potentially gifted students. Nobody else is doing that, and we think that by doing that, we'll be able to build a better pipeline of students coming into Hampton City Schools, and if we can pull them in through the preschool program, that we can then keep them through the gifted track. It will be a challenge to identify those students, but we're doing the research now. And we would also like to be able to provide more professional development for teachers about gifted characteristics and behaviors. We find that's one of the areas where we can have the most impact with finding underserved kids, is helping teachers to understand that gifted kids don't always look classically gifted, may not be getting great, great grades, may be behavior problems, may be only gifted in math and not in language, but that's one of the things we want to do. We do work with Langley and our ESL specialists to make sure that when we do testing, we test a student, we test our ESL students with separate tests to make sure that they also have a fair chance of getting, of being able to show us what they can do, and working with those teachers so when you have an ESL student who doesn't necessarily do well with the assigned reading just because they don't know the language, that we can work with them to make sure they understand those students' talents and abilities. So that's the state of the state of gifted education in Hampton City Schools, and I welcome questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grillo. Questions from board members? Mr. Samuels?
Great presentation. I have a few questions.
Sure.
And, and observation. And the observation didn't come from your presentation, it came from the report that, the addendum to the report. So there appears to be a huge gap between ethnic groups, and...
We are working on that in multiple ways. We've, we've gone through the research to try, that's why we started testing in first grade as well as second grade, and why we look at every student in the division at least twice. That was one of the main recommendations from research, so we put that into place. That's part of why we're going to do more work with teacher training. We also have found ways to get around things, like if a teacher clearly is not seeing the skills in a student that we know has very high test scores, we can work around that teacher. We work with the school counselors. We have what's called a school-level advisor in every school to make sure that parents get the information, to make sure those referral forms go out, and to make sure that we're aware of kids. We have, the collaboration works pretty well. We get students who may be potentially gifted but are up for a intervention team of some sort, and sometimes we can put our gifted staff on those meetings to make sure that kid gets looked at from more than one lens. We had this spring, we had a big parent workshop and filled the auditorium at Spratly, talking about how to get your kid, if you want them evaluated, how to do that. We've put information in all the schools, handouts kinds of things. We have a huge amount of information on our website, so we're working our way through as many things as we possibly can, and we are headed in the right direction. We're not there yet, but we're making progress.
And you did answer my second question in regard to what are some of the strategies that are being implemented to ensure that...
Those are a few.
Yeah, and based on the survey that was received, do you have the percentage of the ethnic groups who responded? Because you basically only said approximately...
No, I...
Like 1,554?
The way we tried to get around that was, or to alleviate that bias, is all of our gifted resource teachers and the Spratly teachers had the kids do the surveys in class on laptops and iPads to make sure that we weren't missing any student input. We didn't necessarily get to all the high school kids or the governor's school kids, but we made sure that that core group of our full-time and gifted resource kids were represented on that survey.
So would that provide you with some quality or quantitative data that you think that would be beneficial if you could add that piece to the survey?
Perhaps it could, and that's certainly something we can look into.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Henry?
You mentioned the ESL students. I know it's also a challenge for the twice-exceptional child, a child who has a learning disability or something else, and 504 plan, all those things are issues. And I know that's, again, a staff development problem. I'd like to give you lots of, lots of money and encouragement for staff development. If I had it, I'd do it, because I'd particularly like us to see two things happen, and one is that we provide gifted core subjects in high school, and I know the kicker on that is to have fully certified teachers. A master's degree somehow doesn't make you fully certified to teach gifted biology if you have a master's in biology. That's the joys of bureaucracy, but I really wish we could do that because I think these kids would profit from gifted core subjects, particularly in their freshman and sophomore years. It's something that I know my child had the advantage of having, and it made a huge difference. I also wish that, there's one area of giftedness that we don't, we don't address. I mean, music is addressed in our wonderful music programs. Art is addressed in every elementary school. People who are physically gifted, turn out to be Olympians in Hampton, so I think we're doing that. But leadership is another area of giftedness, and I really wish we could see some programs beginning in middle elementary to promote and encourage leadership potential. We see it with our wonderful student representatives that come, and we've had the experience of having quite a number of wonderful young people work with us, and they maybe don't have an academic gifted label, but they definitely have leadership gifts, and we can look at the politics of our nation right now and say, we need to be encouraging leadership gifts all the way around. And I really think that's one area that, that we could be doing some more with, and I hope that, you know, nobody has all of our wish lists right now, but when we get through the other crises that we're dealing with in schools and budget, I really wish we could do something with that.
I will certainly take that into consideration. We have very deliberately put a leadership component into our middle school gifted curriculum, but that does only hit the students who are already academically gifted. But certainly, that's something we can look at as one of our eventual next steps. Unfortunately, as you know, with the staff that I have, with eight staff members serving all of the elementary schools and middle schools, we're spread very thin, so it's very hard to figure out how to make more than 24 hours in a day. But it certainly, I'm always welcome to suggestions and looking for other ways that we can serve our students.
Maybe that's a way we can get some community involvement to help with that kind of role for our kids, but it is an important area, and it is recognized in the federal guidelines for, for giftedness. It is a recognized area to address.
Yes, and, and actually, when we've looked at it before, one of the issues was how do you identify students as being gifted in leadership? So there's a lot more, as you know, than, than just saying, let's make a program, but we really have to do the research to figure out how to make that an effective program, so it may take time, but yes, thank you. I will be glad to look into that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Thank you very much, Ms. Grillo.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The next report will be in the area of public relations and marketing, and Ms. Diana Gallata will come forward and provide the board with an update and share all of the great things that are going on.
And we are going to try to get the clicker to work, so let's see. All right. It's working. Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, members of the school board, Dr. Smith, parents and community members. I am honored to share our public relations and marketing update with you this evening. In years past, I've shared with you a broad overview of all of the activities of the public relations and marketing department, but this year I've decided to change it up a little bit and focus it on a few items that we're doing with a little bit more details. In the last couple of years, Hampton City Schools had, has had much success in marketing our schools through social media. We will take a closer look at this success this evening. In addition, thanks to the hard work of our PEG TV staff, we have added two new television shows this school year. And finally, we have a couple more new avenues for publicity that I would like to highlight and debut tonight. Let's begin with the social media. Why do we use it? I will show you two graphs in a minute that illustrate the significant growth of the two social media avenues that we primarily use, Facebook and Twitter. Facebook growth, or Facebook use has grown to 1.65 billion users, and Twitter has grown to 310 million users. Social media is easy to use and it's efficient. Facebook and Twitter, there's no annual or yearly fee, and basically what we're spending on it is our personnel time. It's mobile, so we can post from anywhere. So any event that we're at, that we have our phone or another mobile device, we can device right from that, we can share right from that device. I was sharing some tweets tonight during the recognition ceremony, just right off of my phone. What we do on our Facebook and Twitter account is we post pictures, links, and statuses on Facebook and Twitter, and what we do is, because we're doing that, we're able to push some, some movement to our website, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And also the real-time tweeting and Facebook. If you remember last year, when you named Dr. Jeffrey Smith as our new superintendent, we shared live updates from the school board meeting and actually announced that over Twitter, live. And then two weekends ago, we shared live updates via Twitter and Facebook from the HCS Run for the Stage 5K Event, which raised $11,500 for scholarships. So we try to get out and about at a lot of different places and live tweet. Social media also encourages two-way communication. As you all know, for Facebook and Twitter, our fans can actually send private messages to us or publicly comment on a post. And finally, Facebook and Twitter provide us with really great analytics to help us determine who is viewing and responding to our post. This is particularly helpful when we plan future posts. And this is what I mentioned earlier. Here's the monumental growth in Facebook users, 1.65 billion users. And here's Twitter, from 30 million users in 2010 to 310 million users for the first quarter, quarter of 2016. So let's focus on Facebook in Hampton City Schools. First of all, as a... First of all, as of last week, and this was last week, I know we have a few more since then, our school division Facebook page has had 5,726 likes, which means that when we post an item, there is the potential for 5,726 people to see the post. We post to Facebook multiple times per day and often on weekends. Many of our posts are pictures while others provide links to web briefs on our website. As I mentioned earlier, this helps drive traffic back to our website. I shared a little bit earlier about the analytics provided to us through Facebook. It's really incredible when we go back and look at some of those analytics. In less than a month's time, this is what's on the screen, we looked at April 28th through May 25th, so the last month or so. In that time period alone, our page, our Facebook page, reached 70,250 people. 68% of those reached are women. And more than half of those reached engaged on our page in some way, either by clicking on a photo, liking, sharing or commenting on a post. So it's pretty phenomenal, the kind of reach that we're getting through Facebook. We've also seen an increase in the number of schools with Facebook pages. Currently, about 53% of our schools have a Facebook page. About three years ago, only a handful of schools have Facebook pages. Of course, our goal is to see the number increase to 100%. And this is a screenshot of the Hampton City Schools Facebook page, and I know a number of you all like it and follow it. And then this is the official Bethel High School Facebook page. And then here's the Hunter B. Andrews Pre-K Through 8 Family Engagement Connection page. Before we move on to Twitter, I would like to share one more piece of Facebook data with you. As you know, Connor Dunn, a teacher at Sims Middle School, earned a $100,000 Fab Lab grant to make over a science lab into a dream STEM lab. When Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith arrived at Sims to let Connor know he had won, our PEG TV cameras were rolling. Subsequently, we posted this video to our Facebook page. As you can see by these, through these analytics, the video was widely viewed with 19,521 unique viewers. These are people who viewed it one time. So let's move on to Twitter. We're fairly new to Twitter. Opening our school division account September 2013, we have about 3,400 followers. And like Facebook, we post multiple times per day, driving traffic to positive news on our division website. We have sent more than 8,300 tweets from our division Twitter account. I am so excited to share that 80% of our schools have an official Twitter account, which is significant considering that HCS did not have a presence on Twitter about three years ago. This year, we began to send out power tweets via email to our staff members. Power tweet emails include specific targeted messages and we encourage our power tweeters to send them out during a specific time period, which enhances the strength of our message. Our Twitter reach has also been enhanced by the many departments using Twitter. As you can see on the screen, several departments are sharing good news through Twitter. Additionally, we have a number of teachers and other staff members on Twitter. It is not uncommon to see different types of teaching and learning on these Twitter accounts. At the division level, we frequently seek out these tweets and retweet them through our account to improve the reach. This is a tweet last year that got a lot of attention from Moton Early Childhood Center. It was "When I Grow Up Day." So we had a little girl who wanted to be a police officer, so she's standing there, pictured with the SRO. Our science department is phenomenal with their tweets. And of course, they do a lot of great hands-on learning, so a lot of things that we can take pictures of. They are, if you're not following them, I would encourage you to follow hcs underscore science department. This is a picture from the James River ecosystem with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Phoebus High School is also very, a great tweeter. I don't know if Mr. Hudson's still here, but he does an excellent job. And this is a tweet about Alexis Thompson receiving her scholarship from the Exchange Club of With. And then our teachers are doing a great job. This is a tweet from the Reading Interventionist at Cary Elementary, talking about Little Miss Muffet and the spiders. And then Nicholas Swan, who you probably know, he's a science teacher at Andrews Pre-K Through 8. He's also an excellent tweeter. Here at Andrews, they are studying the moon phases and reviewing life science concepts. Although not as comprehensive as Facebook, Twitter can show you additional information on your tweets. Not surprising at all, we typically see the most Twitter engagement when we close school due to bad weather. As you can see, this tweet sent last October was shared nearly 400 times and generated 29,845 impressions. More than 4,091 people engaged with the tweet. As you know, our folks at PEG TV work hard to provide programming for Channel 46, Channel 47 and Channel 48. In addition to their broadcasts of school board meetings, citizen of the month luncheons, graduations and special shows such as Wired In and School Notes, the TV staff has decided to add two new shows this school year. You've already seen Digital Bridge, which debuted earlier this year. This show, which is hosted by Paul Lawrence, who's Director of Instructional Literacy, and it features classroom activities related to our digital learning program. We have produced four shows this year and you may view the shows on Channel 46 every day at 11:00 AM, 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM. You may also access the show on YouTube via our website. A new show that debuted earlier this spring is the Shining Stars Alumni Series. In this series, we highlight successful alumni from Hampton City Schools. Our first set of four graduates was promoted on Facebook and we received a lot of positive feedback. I will show you two of our newest alumni featured at the end of this presentation. I'm going to debut a couple more videos. But before I do that, I do want to share some information on two new projects we are doing that will use what I would consider the more traditional forms of communication. I often hear people ask me for positive facts about Hampton City Schools that they would like to easily share with other people. In compiling that information, we decided to develop more traditional ways to communicate. As you know, social media, TV and email do not always reach everyone. Pictured above is a draft of a notepad that will feature between 40 to 50 positive facts about HCS on each page. We will print these internally in our print shop and distribute to multiple places throughout the community. The second communication avenue is a placemat. A draft is pictured above. We are currently working with local restaurants to provide paper placemats that will be printed internally to use to not only communicate with residents, but also with visitors to our city. We plan to pilot this program this summer with a few restaurants to see how it goes. Before answering questions, I do want to share our most recent alumni spotlight video. In the interest of time, this show will feature Hampton High and Phoebus. But don't worry Bruins and Warriors, additional videos featuring Bethel and Kikatang grads are currently in production. Roll video.
My name is Ramona Gray Amaro. I am a proud member of the class of 1989. We were the first freshmen at Hampton High School. Right now, I am a chemistry sourcing project manager at Merck Pharmaceutical Company. I've been there for 19 years and 14 of those, I was the chemist. I manage our overseas vendors in the drug discovery process. They basically scale up compounds for us. We bring them back in-house and we test them, the targets for viability for a drug, basically. The survivor story goes, I'd never heard of the show before. A friend of mine sent me an email and, you know, the whole blurb of carving out a civilization, 29 days, 16 people. I mean, what did I have to lose? I was working at a job I felt really comfortable at. They gave me the time off, which was unheard of. And so I filled out the application, sent in the video and they called me back for an interview. I feel like the Hampton City Schools prepared me perfectly. And that's starting from John B. Cary Elementary School where my absolute favorite teacher, I didn't really like her at the time, but I realized she was the best teacher ever. She pushed me, she basically set the bar higher than I had set for myself and she didn't let me perform below that. Here at Hampton, so many fond memories. Mr. Wilson's history class, Ms. Dancy, being a natural helper, just sparked my interest in community service, helping others, working with children and being a critical thinker. I mean, I think that's so important today. So another thing that I really took away from being a proud member of Hampton High School in particular is the sports. I think every kid should play sports, either a solo sport or a team sport, because I think it teaches discipline, it teaches teamwork. You need that in the real world. I'm remembering all these things, standing in the hallway. It's surreal coming back here. You know, I've worn some of my paraphernalia before and people make fun, you know, the crab and they're like, your mascot was a crab. And I'm like, don't talk about the crab, okay? It's a serious business. But yeah, it's, you know, my mom drove me up and, you know, I'm looking at the grounds, looks amazing, the billboard out front and then walking the halls, seeing, you know, my class picture in the hallways and, you know, these trophies. Just being back here, it's, I don't know, it just gives me butterflies. I just had really great memories here and it's really good to be back.
Hi, my name's Corinne Clinch and I graduated from Phoebus High School in 2010. Now, I'm co-founder and CEO of my own startup company, Rohrs Inc. Rohrs Inc. is a for-profit startup that uses new nanotechnology and user-centered design to make incredibly simple water filters. Right now, we're developing them for disaster relief in developing countries, but they're also going to be used for outdoor recreation and military. My company just recently won South by Southwest and collision conference. It's really brought a lot of exciting interest from investors and other startups to what we've been doing. I went to Carnegie Mellon University for both biomedical engineering and civil engineering, but I was originally going actually for electrical computer engineering because of the experience I had with First Robotics at Phoebus High School. I really enjoyed the end mechanism design and getting into the coding and sort of background of engineering. The only reason I didn't stick with that is I wanted a job that was more involved with humans, so I went for the engineering, so more focused on people. Toy Carpenter, Mr. Carpenter, did a great job instilling in us that there's no reason for excuses. You need to learn for yourself, not for me. And that was a really important lesson. It was really cool to see a teacher really supporting us being our own managers. I got really involved in my summers and internships that involved a lot of international development work. So I started working in Ghana, also in South Africa, a lot of purification research. And I brought those back to a student-led project at CMU. I found a really great team to start working with. It's actually my co-founder of the company. And based on progress in that student project, a couple investors reached out and said, you know, what you're building as a project really could be a company. And at first, we were very lighthearted about it. It was sort of this, well, why not? We still have to finish our degrees, why not start a company? But of course, now it's become very, very serious and meaningful to us. It's our full-time, everyday job. The advice I actually gave in my valedictorian speech was to ask and seek and knock and make the most out of your experience. No matter what it is that you're passionate about, you can find some way to learn more about it and involve your coursework with it. You know, if it's sports, then find a way for your stats class to become relevant to your interests and your passions. That really makes it way easier to learn. Teachers respond well to it and it makes transitioning to the real world of work much
Pretty impressive graduates. I'm honored to stand before you and give this presentation. At this time, I'll take any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Galata. Any questions from board members or comments for her tonight?
I'm going to tweet something.
My mic's up, I'm going to tweet something for you there.
Good. Well, we tweeted a picture of you earlier, so you can go retweet it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you so much. Great report. Getting our good story out there, doing a great job.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Our next report will be that of Pride and Summer Projects and our Deputy Superintendent, Susie Scott, will provide information in terms of Pride and Summer Projects. And so, thank you, Ms. Scott.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, members of the board and Dr. Smith. I'm here to give you a sneak peek of upcoming summer projects as well as an update on our Pride initiative. I know normally we do a presentation at the end when the summer projects are done, but we thought we'd give you a preview of what's going to come. So, to start things off, we're going to look at Cary Elementary. We will be installing a brand-new variable refrigerant flow HVAC system at Cary Elementary. This is a relatively new system in the United States and in public school systems. However, it's been used for years in Europe and Asia. York County has actually installed this in several schools with great success and are continuing to install it in additional schools. We actually made a field trip to York County, I don't know, a couple of months ago and got a tour of one of the schools with this system and asked a lot of questions. So it was very interesting. The advantages of this system include significant energy savings, a greater ability to control temperature based on environmental variables such as the sun exposure, wind, the number of exterior walls, whether the classroom is an interior or exterior room, et cetera. So it's a lot easier to control for those variables instead of just saying everybody's set at the same temperature. Our goal is to make this building the most energy-efficient building in the division, including our Pre-K 8 schools. If the anticipated results are achieved, then we expect that this will become the model for future HVAC renovations. So we're really excited to see how it goes. We'll also be adding energy-efficient LED lighting and new suspended ceilings in the school as part of this renovation, which will also improve the efficiency. Next up is Lindsay Middle School, which will receive a long-awaited auditorium renovation. This renovation will follow the same design criteria that we've used in the last several auditorium renovations. And just as a side note on this, once Lindsay and Eaton, which I'll tell you about in a minute, are completed, all of our secondary schools will have renovated auditoriums. At Davis Middle School, Davis has waited patiently for the last several years. They haven't had any significant improvements. They're getting quite a few this year. We are replacing the windows and the front facade. At least three-quarters of the main building will get new windows. We're still working on the budget from the bid, but we're going to do as much of it as we can. And the look of the front of the building will also change. I think you'll be very excited to see how that looks. The chiller was replaced this spring, just in time for air conditioning season. The classroom HVAC and controls will be replaced and installed over the summer. The HVAC replaced, the controls installed. And our kitchen and cafeteria roof will be replaced. So some significant improvements going on at Davis Middle School. Eaton Fundamental School, as I mentioned, with Lindsay, they're getting an auditorium renovation and this completes our secondary school auditorium renovations. So we're really excited about that. We'll also be rebuilding the chiller there over the summer, which will extend the useful life at a significantly reduced cost. And we'll be replacing all classroom and office HVAC units. Restroom renovations, you know, over the last few years, we've been doing a few at a time of restroom renovations at various schools. And we're going to continue by doing this summer Moton Pre-K, Aberdeen, Asbury, Bassett and Langley Elementary and Davis Middle School. This includes ADA accommodations. We do at least two bathrooms in each school, a boys and a girls. And as we design these renovations, we're looking at adjusting the privacy partition height to try and lower them a little bit closer to the floor so the, for the comfort and convenience of all of our students. At Phoebus High School, they are getting a new gym floor. It will be a traditional wood floor. They're also getting Phase 1 of a roof replacement. If you look in the center of the picture, that large structure at the top is called a penthouse. It's where a lot of the mechanical equipment is housed. There are two of those on the building and it's where- on the building, and it's where we have the primary issues with leaking, and so the roof will be replaced under those sections. Also, in the food and nutrition services budget, Ms. Forrest has scheduled a renovation of the student serving line in the kitchen area, so we're excited to see that. And just a few additional capital projects, and this is not an all-inclusive list, there are lots of little projects, I've got Mr. Sawyer here with me as my backup tonight, and he'll tell you that they stayed very, very busy over the summer, and this is, while this reflects a lot of the major projects, there are a lot of smaller projects going on as well. But for just a few additional ones, Jones will have the rear windows, right here in this building, replaced, which generally reflects classroom areas, bandroom windows, and CTE lab windows, but it's going across the back of the building. At Bassett Elementary, to relieve the bottleneck that they experienced at arrival and dismissal because of the cars and buses competing, they will actually get a separate exit, so when you go in, you'll be able to go straight back and exit out onto Norwood, so that you will not have to compete with the buses, so that should be a big improvement there. At Hampton High School, we're replacing four classroom barred units, HVAC units, and updating the Siemens control network to allow centralized control of the building. At Mary Peak, they are finally getting a true asphalt parking lot for the buses, so we're very excited about that. At Langley, the 100 wing of the building will get new carpet tiles to include the library. At Kikotan High School, they'll get new tile in the ROTC area and in one other instructional classroom. At Lindsay Middle School, we'll be replacing the floor tiles in the rear 10 classrooms, where we have some water damage from a previous leak issue that has since been repaired. And then finally, at Asbury Elementary, we'll begin the breezeway design to do the breezeway enclosure, as we've done at some of the other elementary schools. So at this point, I'm gonna pause and let you ask questions on this section before we move on to Pride, and my backup man will help me if your question is too tough for me. So, any questions on this part?
Questions from board members? Thomas?
Yes, sir.
I can't say I am happy about the floor installation on the ROTC room. This must be, I would think, third or fourth time now, we've had people come by and fix the room and the building, because every time it's rained throughout the years, the entire classroom floods. Somehow, the rain gets through the wall and floods the whole classroom. Last, I think it was last month, we just had them completely dig up the outside where the wall is, and put down trenches and all that, try to get the water out, and sure enough, I walked into the Kiva today to go aid, and Senior Chief looked at me and said, "I'm glad you're here, Mr. Perry," and tossed me a mop bucket. So, I'm hoping that with this floor tile installation, that it'll solve the flooding problem that we're having on that side of the school.
Any other questions or comments from board members on this segment of the report?
Okay, all right, moving on. So we're gonna, whoops, my presentation needs to move on with me. We're gonna move on to a status update on Pride, Partnering Responsibly in Delivering Excellence, which you first heard about in an initial report presented by Dr. Haynes in December. At that time, we explained that this initiative was a partnership among several organizations, to include our Hampton City Schools students and staff, the City of Hampton Parks and Recreation Department, and Hampton Clean City Commission, our GCA Custodial Services, and our own Hampton City Schools Department of Maintenance and Operations. The initial goals centered around looking at our current systems and recognizing opportunities for improvement. We've met with Parks and Recreation staff as an initial step to gain a better understanding of the current services available, and to collaborate on better communication and process improvement. The new director, Kevin Myers, and his staff have been very open to this, and we have set up a system of quarterly review meetings. We're also using this as an opportunity to provide more defined focus to the efforts of the many volunteers who offer to assist at our schools. So why do we do this? For all the reasons you see listed here, which include safety, cleanliness, curb appeal, school pride, building preservation, and energy efficiency through the replacement of traditional lighting with LED lighting. It is a team effort, requiring the buy-in of students, staff, and the community. So what's first? Well, we're gonna do some mini Pride makeovers. Seven to 10 of our schools will be selected to receive a Pride makeover during the summer. Ann Bain, Tom Sawyer, and myself have been around reviewing the schools, scrutinizing at a very close level of detail, trying to look at the different kinds of things that we can do that both improve curb appeal and the appearance of the building, and yet are not so grand in scale that they're not affordable, because we're not talking capital projects here. The work may be on the interior, or the exterior, or both, of the building, and possible makeover items include, on the indoors, painting the interior halls, which may be on a smaller scale in a larger school, may just be entry halls, painting the office door in accent color, and talking about paint, we're trying to standardize our paint colors. I had a really good time over at Home Depot one day, talking to a charming gentleman who really helped me with paint and gave me color wheels, which I'm really having fun with, and we're gonna try and standardize our color selection, so that as we're doing painting in schools, as volunteers are doing painting, that we have exact brand and color and mixture, so that it makes it a little easier to do touch-ups, or to match this wall to that wall, or whatever. So we're trying to work through that, and Matt Hauser's been great with trying to give me everybody's school colors, so that I have them all in a list. On the out, oh, in addition, on indoors, we've looked at doing a mascot logo at the entry of the school, and mascot mats at the entry. On the outdoors, we've looked at weeding the front yard, so to speak, of schools, killing the weeds in the sidewalks, trimming trees and bushes, planting flowers if appropriate, and if the space is available, and I will say, we're working very closely with Parks and Rec in any landscaping efforts, to ensure that we are not creating extra work for them, and also working with the schools, you know, for whatever schools are selected, to make sure that they're gonna be willing to maintain and nurture any new plantings until they're established. We will also look at painting exterior doors on the building, restriping the parking lot, or the yellow bus curb as needed, and any other items that may be specific to a school that's selected. As we were looking at the various schools, there were some things that were unique to a school. Also, we looked at signage, you know, like no parking, the various signs that you see throughout the parking lot, patching sidewalks if it's necessary, power washing, I noticed in a number of places, there were areas of the brick that really just needed a good power washing, and Mr. Sawyer has actually already purchased a power washer, so that we can get started with that part on the schools that we select. The schools that have canopies, we're looking at, you know, power washing, painting, adding LED lighting, sprucing up the overall look of those canopies where it's applicable to the school selected. Power washing the exterior, I mentioned, and we're also looking at marquees. Marquees do tend to be fairly expensive, so we can't do a wholesale replacement, and some are honestly in worse shape than others. Some of them look great, some of them really do need some work, so we are looking at refurbishment or replacement of selected marquees at some schools. We're hoping to issue an actual bid process, so that we can have a master contract and work with Mrs. Gallata to create sort of a standard look to our marquees, so that they're identifiable quickly as Hampton City Schools. And then, our GCA partnership has already started to work on Pride. They have started an initiative of a Pride School of the Month. The April was the first month, and Lindsay Middle School was the winner of the award for April, and they redid the courtyard at Lindsay. So, we've got just a couple of slides with pictures of the courtyard makeover, they even got a little fountain there, and it was very attractive. So, I think it's these kinds of things, working with our various partners and doing some of these makeover efforts, some of which are very low-cost, or even, you know, almost free, when they're done with our own internal labor, and I think it will really make a difference. And with that, just, any questions?
Comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
I really think it's great to have a kind of a master plan, that organizations who want to come in and help have, okay, we can do these colors, we can paint these walls, the marquee thing being uniform is a big help. You know, we got our first marquee at Phoebus as a contribution from an alumni reunion, and if alumni groups or PTA groups know how much it costs, you know, it's gonna cost $850 for this marquee, we can get it over two years if we put aside the money and so forth, and this is what it will look like, and it will be da-da-da, that it really is helpful to people to have a guideline for how they can participate.
I agree.
And I must say, I was visiting Phoebus High School and saw whoever the new contractor they have from Parks and Rec doing grounds, doing all kinds of clipping and cleaning, and doing a great job of managing all the grounds at Phoebus, and I think we already have a partnership going with Clean City Commission, because I was at a school that the Clean City Commission, in their litter inventory, found it to be not very literally attractive, and so I was out with a bunch of old folks picking up stuff around the school, that where, this is where we need to involve the students in taking pride, and so, you know, when we show up on the litter watch in a school, everybody in the school needs to know that, because kids don't wanna be known as the trashiest school in the block, you know, but we need to encourage them to take part and have student organizations involved in
I agree.
... cleanups. Many student organizations go out and clean up their neighborhood, they need to start with home, with
I agree, that's why I said it's so important that we get the buy-in of our students, our staff, our community, to help.
Students will take pride in their school, and you need to give them that, present that opportunity to them.
Absolutely.
So I think it's very encouraging, and when you look and you have a new look to your front entrance, you feel proud as a student.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes, Ms. Scott. Some months ago, we met with Mayor Wallace's vice, Mayor Curtis, and Senate Manager Mrs. Bunting, and there was a mention of possibly trying to get some students involved during the summer, because as we know, teenagers have a hard time finding work. Is there any initiative by the contractors, I assume that, well, I won't make that assumption, sometimes you hire contractors to do certain work, is there initiative on their part to employ youth, or is there some connection with the City of Hampton through their youth employment program? In other words, are there any opportunities? I mean, I look at painting, I mean, are there any opportunities for students to be employed during the summer?
I'm not aware of the progress of the city's initiatives, but I'm happy to check into it. We certainly, you know, want to encourage participation in that to the greatest extent possible, so I'll be happy to see where it stands and what we can do.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Samuels?
Just, this thought just came to mind, in regards to the corporate sponsors, or the partners that we currently contract with, is there an opportunity to extend this partnership with corporate sponsors beyond the school grounds, or individuals that we currently have contract with, such as, for example, if Langley would like to have a garden named after Langley Federal Credit Union, we could partner with them and possibly secure some sponsorship from Langley Federal Credit Union, because the reason why I'm saying so is because I know the individual who is in charge of the community, can't remember the name of the organization, within Langley Federal Credit Union, we can partner with them.
Okay.
So that's another opportunity and avenue that we could look into.
Yes, sir, certainly worth looking into, yes.
And that person is Gary Hunter.
Gary Hunter, got it, as soon as I sit down and have a pen, but that's an easy name to remember, so.
Yes, he's a member of Newport New School Board.
Oh, I thought the name sounded familiar.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments from school board members for Ms. Scott? Okay, Dr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair, the final report, it's also
I'll just stay here.
So we'll ask her to remain there and provide us with the final report, it's listed here, Business Operations Financial Update.
All right, so we'll continue on with the financial update. This is the financial status as of April the 30th, 2016. Our revenues to date at that point were $156,623,922. Our expenditures and encumbrances, $158,267,402. This is on target for our budgeted ADM of $19,700. The March ADM was revised slightly from the last report I gave you, they frequently resubmit when something kicks back from the state, so the revised March ADM is $19,748.56, which is 48.56 students over what we budgeted. This will result in approximately $175,000 in additional revenue, not counting any impacts we may see from decreased Medicaid or Impact Aid revenue. Also in the report is our monthly tally of categorical transfers to or from category nine, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments from board members on the financials? How do you get a .56?
Because it's average daily membership, so when you're averaging the number of days of attendance of any given student, you can come out with a fraction of a student.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for the report. Dr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair, that concludes Superintendent and Staff reports.
Very well, we'll move on to the hearing of any delegations, or presentation of any written communications. Ms. Bowers, would you share the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent of Schools. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. First of all, I'd like to say something about the hearing we had earlier. I was impressed with the turnout from members of Hampton, residents of Hampton, and perhaps a number of outsiders as well, but at the same time, I was disappointed, not necessarily a reflection on what you're doing, but just the broader issue here about our school system. There appeared to be very little of the real stake, very few of the real stakeholders present, and those would be the parents of the children in the schools today, on which the issue arises with the names. And so, that really gets to the heart of the matter why you're all here today, why I'm here today, and that's the supposed intent of the school system to be excellent in everything it does. I hear that word thrown around a lot, and I think the word excellence connotes, is a superlative, which means it connotes better than those around you. And while I'm seeing some good anecdotal evidence And while I'm seeing some good anecdotal evidence, given the young graduates that were presented awards here tonight, and the work Ms. Gallardo is doing on her marketing in particular, that is performance-based, imperial, I'm sorry, what's the word I'm looking for, empirical evidence of the effectiveness of the school system. But it's very slim at best. What I would like to ask is you do more of that on a much broader scale for the entire system, comparing this school system in many ways to other school systems. That's how you demonstrate excellence in what you're doing. That's the purpose of a school system, is to educate, first of all, but for what reason in the end? To make those people, those students, those graduates, better citizens. And how do you measure that? I really ask that you continue to address that, to really draw, highlight this school system to demonstrate that it really is excellent. I'm still not seeing that to a significant extent. Self-assessment, subjective self-assessment, is not sufficient to demonstrate that. Okay. What I thought, this naming of a school system or schools, I thought was somewhat of a distraction from your mission here. Moving on to another distraction. Two weeks ago, I believe you received a letter from the Department, U.S. Departments of Education and Justice regarding, I will call it, gender confusion in our school system. I'd like to know, is there a problem, is there a broad problem of gender-confused students in our school system? And if so, what do you intend to do about that? What is the position of this school system on that issue? Because that brings not only high risk to the school body, but significant cost as well. Have you taken any time yet to consider that and the ramifications of that? So how will you identify those people if you're going to acquiesce to the federal guidance? And how will you identify them? And what if those few, at best, decide they want to change their identity every single day for whatever purpose? How are you going to do that? How will you protect the privacy of the rest of the school body? Deuteronomy, chapter 22, verse 5, says, "A woman shall not wear man's clothing, nor shall a man put on a woman's clothing; for whoever does these things is an abomination of the Lord your God." That's the way we should be thinking in our school system. Is there any morality left among the administration and the school board members here? Are any of you willing to take a moral stand on this issue? Or will you continue to worship at the temple of the federal government? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Our next speaker is Leon Sankofa? Did I have that right?
Good evening. My name is Leon Sankofa. I was a student here from elementary through high school, prepared well by this, well, very well by this school, going to function and graduate from a couple of different universities. I still am a resident here at the city of Hampton. I actually own a business here in Hampton. I employ probably about forty people, and I have here with me today about three other mental health providers like myself, and I think collectively, just the four of us. Couldn't get enough people here today. But just the four of us probably represent probably about a hundred and fifty employees. We are minority-owned businesses. And I also worked in the school system, approximately twelve years as a school social worker. And I worked at probably about, probably about twenty schools. And in the collective work that I've done with the schools and partnered with the school while working in the system, I've worked with many more. The question that I bring to the table today is the question that you guys, there was a decision made, 2007, 2008, to go with one provider for, one provider for what they call therapeutic day treatment and mental health support, mental health services to work with our kids. It's a Medicaid fee-based program. I happen to have a therapeutic day treatment program as well. The problem is, is there is an item in terms of what Medicaid is requesting from providers like me, that they approve for services, that says that everyone has to, that the parent has to have, what's that word called? Freedom of choice, thank you. And freedom of choice is designed so that it would remove the abuses of people taking advantage of the poor and underprivileged. And freedom of choice simply says, listen, and we all have to sign this document when we, when we see a client, when we do an assessment, when we do documentation, this documentation has to say, we have to forewarn them that, guess what? We're not the only person who provide this service. Well, the school division violates that policy by having one provider. So many of us providers who are here, who are out in periphery, we're out serving the same clients. We actually have the same employees, you know. The criteria to do what we do is the same criteria that the community service board has. It's the exact same criteria. The problem tends to be, in most cases, is the, again, choice. Sometimes families want choice. Sometimes they don't want to deal with us because they want choice. Sometimes they don't want to deal with anyone else because they want choice. But the point is, they should have the right to choose, and the school division should bear the responsibility of assuring that we're not oligarchy, you know, in the way we manage things. You're democratic, and people who have health insurance and can choose between Optima and those other places or the different doctors where our Medicaid-based families has to go with the CSB. This is what we have put in place. I think it was, I don't think enough thought was put into that. Also, when you're managing, and I work and consult with quite a few school divisions right now, also, when you're managing one particular entity, if there has to be moves made, like maybe you're not satisfied with them, or maybe the division is satisfied with them, it's an act of Congress to make changes. Whereas when you have multiple choices, you're also, at that same time, you're actually providing parents with choice so you're in compliance with Medicaid. And while you're providing these multiple choices, if you have to make diverse moves, it's not an act of Congress. You don't have to vote them out. So what I want to say in closing is, do your research, you know. Ask your schools, ask your school leadership. Are they satisfied with what they have? Or could they, would they, could they see themselves benefiting from others? What I'm actually finding is companies like me, we always have, we're in our communities so we're coming with different needs. So what I'm able to do in the Bassett, in Armstrong, in Aberdeen Community, is based on some needs that the school is saying, that the community is saying. What I'm saying to you is we're missing a really big piece of initiatives that are running right in the communities, like mentorships, simply because if I can't provide it here, then we're out somewhere else providing those same services in another community. When Hampton needs these services, we need the services here. Our parents need choices, and we need to make sure that you are following the law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Tyrone Melvin. And Mr. Melvin will be followed by Tyanda Jones.
Good evening. I am Tyrone Melvin, Jr., and I also was raised in this city. And I was very impressed with all the things that the school board is doing. And I went to Tucker Capps Elementary, transferred to Robert E. Lee Elementary. One of the things they were talking about, changing the name, Jeff Davis, at that time, Junior High School. I was in that transition period where they changed it to middle school. I was the last graduate of Jeff Davis Junior High. Then went on to Bethel High School, and we did crush the crap from with the ladies up at Hampton High School. But I'm also a provider of a mental health counseling agency by the name of Odyssey Community Services. And we saw this change come in the city of Hampton where we weren't able to provide the services to your city. And we, when you look at the freedom of choice, which Mr. Sankova was talking about, we all had to go and get licensed along with the community service board. We have to get licensed by the state with human rights in order to acquire a state license, provider license, to provide these health services, mental health services. And one of the policies and the human rights policies is the freedom of choice. And it's a state policy, state law, that we have to give our clients or anyone that's seeking out services, the freedom of choice to choose not only what service they would like to be in, but also any other agencies that are providing services. Just speaking on it, we don't have anything against your choosing the CSB as a provider, but what it is that's being violated is the clients, the people that's seeking out the mental health services. And doing that is like a violation of their rights. Also, if, we have seen as providers, well, I have seen as a provider, that as they choose, maybe what we're looking at is community, I mean, therapeutic day treatment, they're told to utilize the schools. And at the same time, we have services, we have multiple services that we provide, and one is intensive in-home. So it's easier, and with us providing intensive in-home, it's easier for us to collaborate within our own company with a therapeutic day treatment service along with the intensive in-home service, where we're providing services in the home and in the schools. And with them being torn, we're trying to make a decision, well, what service should I choose? Because I'm being told that I can't use you in the schools, but I can use you at home. And it's something that the clients, the people that are seeking out these services, social services refers these clients to us. We get some schools' guidance refer us clients. We have people in the community that refer us clients, and the clients are struggling to receive the service, which isn't right. It's violating their rights. And we just wanted to make you all aware of it so you can be knowledgeable about what you have allowed in the city of Hampton. But other than that, I'm very pleased with what you're doing. This is just something that we would like for you all to be knowledgeable of and see if you can probably come back to the table. And we know in other cities where we provide these services, which kind of push us out, like Mr. Sankova said, to help other cities, but being from Hampton, we would like to provide these services and help our people here that have those disabilities. But we know that these other school boards are devising plans where RFP can be provided to the masses of the providers. And that's all, we'd like to see if y'all could devise some other plan to give us an opportunity to show you how great we provide services to the clients in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Tywanda Jones, and Tywanda will be followed by Richard Mason.
Good evening. My name is Tyanda Jones. Thank you all for the opportunity to be able to speak with you all this evening. I am a program director for therapeutic day treatment services with Odyssey Community Services. Much like my counterpart, we have struggled for quite a while to try to provide services for some of the students here due to us not being allowed to be able to be into the schools, but we found an innovative way to be able to help them through the community. We're currently servicing students that are at Lindsay Middle, Davis Middle, Eaton Middle, and Spratly. So we found a way to service them outside of the schools, but yet we feel that we could probably help them more so improve their academic and their behavior performance if we were allowed the ability to actually be in the school, so as to provide more collaborative services with the children. So what we're asking for, or what I'm asking for at this time, is if you all would please reconsider your decision that you've made to only allow the community service board to be in your schools. We have to adhere by the same regulations that they do, and we provide many of the, we provide many services similar to what they provide. And with our therapeutic day treatment program, we assist the children with peer mediation, which from many of the schools that we've spoken to, that is a concern that's currently going on in the school system. We also, in our community-based program, we assist them with improving their anger, with conflict resolution, and interpersonal skills, which many of our young people tend to lack, as well as empathy. And we've had quite a few success rates that have come out of our program. So again, we ask that you please reconsider and allow us the opportunity to help your children in your schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Final speaker is Richard Mason.
Good evening. And I'll make this brief. I'm Dr. Richard Mason with Oasis Counseling Center. My colleagues have all shared with you various reasons why, and that there's a need to work together. We have a lot of children out there that are currently struggling. When I read your sign, every child, every day, whatever it takes. Unfortunately, the system that's currently in place, the CSB, is not capable of being able to handle every child every day. They're not able to be able to do whatever it takes because it takes more than one agency to be able to provide the necessary services to the children in the Hampton community. And at this time, we have children and families that are currently suffering because there are some things that they are missing. And so in order to be able to provide the necessary services to every child every day by doing whatever it takes, what I would like to see is a meeting between some of our consortium agencies. We have a group of agencies that have been working together in the midst of trying to be able to provide services, services to these children and their families every day. And so if we can sit down and have a meeting with someone from the school board administration office or from the personnel office to sit down and see how can we work as a consortium, not to just eliminate the community services board, because there are things that we have to work with the community services board on, and that's a state-regulated or state-mandated item. We have to be able to work in this community together. So I would like to request a meeting so that we can sit down and discuss what are the possibilities of us being able to collaborate and work together so that we can meet the needs of our children in the Hampton community every day by doing whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the therapy day treatment programs, the decision with respect to that is an administrative decision, and I'm sure that members of our administration will take this under advisement and take a look at things. Thank you very much. We move on now from our hearing of any delegations or presentations to items for action. We begin with item 6.01, which are the minutes from school board meeting of April 20, 2016. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we consider all these items together, and we approve the items for action as listed.
A second.
It's been moved by Ms., and seconded by Mr. Samuels, that we approve items 6.01 through 6.04 as a block. Is there any discussion? There being none, I will just state for the record that the action items tonight are, as originally stated, the minutes of the school board meeting of April 20, 2016, the revision of school board policy BDH, which is public comment at school board meetings, small revision to that. Item 6.03 is the revision to school board policy KD, public comment at school board meetings, again, another minor revision to that policy. And finally, item 6.04, which is Title I, II, and III, 2016, 2017 entitlement grants. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Moving from our items for action, we move on to deliberation in the memorandum of understanding between the School Board and the City of Hampton to allow School Board property at Lindsay Middle School to be used as a community garden space. Is there any deliberative, uh, comments or questions from board members on this item?
Ms. Mugler, I, I just think we're, we're very happy to have the pictures. It makes it more clear. I understand the fence has been ordered, it's ready to go, and there'll be a lot of excited community gardeners if we can get this approved. And poor Ms. Blanton has had to sit through a long meeting so she could represent it, if you have any questions about it.
Other questions from board members on the MOU? Mrs., uh, Smith?
Um, yeah, I was wondering, okay, I have a couple of questions. So, um, memorandum of use is needed for no matter what location, even the other side of the community center, is School Board property?
It's all our property.
Wow, okay. Um, another question was, I saw where it said only 20 spots can fit if we do it in the location on the other side, um, location two or whatever.
If you'd like, I'll have Ms. Blanton address the, the differences in the locations.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
That's why we asked her to be here, because the last time when we presented this, the School Board asked if there were any alternate locations that could be considered for various reasons. So she's more or less located three with pros and cons to each, so I'll let her explain that.
That would be great.
That'd be great. Good evening, Ms. Blanton.
Good evening. And actually, I'm standing in for Wendy Isles, so I am not, I, I make a public statement that I am not a gardener, but I fully support gardeners. So, um, what Wendy wanted me to relay to you is that when it comes to configuring the garden plots, that the most efficient use of the space is to use a s- a square or a tri- or, excuse me, a rectangle. And that the area that's on the other side of the community center, because of the logistics of, um, of the other criteria that need to be met in terms of water and, and, um, siding at certain distances away from sidewalks and what have you, the, that site would have to be essentially a V. And so would reduce the number of, of spaces that would be available from 44 to 20, approximately 20. So in order to have the, um, the most possible plots available for the community, it would be best to use the site that allows the, the rectangle. Um, also Wendy asked me to pass along to you that, um, in the other community gardens, that there are rarely more than four gardeners at a time at the site, just because they all come and go at different times. And that we can build into the rules of the garden, when people can come, that they can't go beyond a certain area around the garden area. And so any concerns that you would have about people just kind of wandering over the school grounds could be addressed through garden rules, and if people violate those rules, then they would lose their plot. And most people would probably be gardening on weekends anyway. In my opinion, that's a non-gardener's opinion, but.
Questions for Ms. Blanton? Um, Mrs. Smith?
Um, and there's nothing there now, right?
There's nothing there now.
I just saw the memorandum of use said effective April 1st, 2016, so I was, I wasn't.
It was originally presented.
Oh, okay, all right. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't already something.
Yeah. Sometimes wheels turn slowly.
And, um, so the main, so there's electricity and water for both sides, there's, so the main difference is the amount of plots you can get in?
Right.
Okay.
Right. And just from a non-gardener's point of view, um, I would say that probably the proximity to the dumpsters might be at a, make it be a less attractive site for potential gardeners. Just because I know more about garb-
As a non-gardener, I would agree.
I know more about garbage than I do about gardening, but.
In, in this aerial view, where is the dumpster?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but the dumpster, oh, thank you. The dumpster is at, kind of where the, the V is. It's in the V, not quite to the top of the V, it's hidden in the shadows. So it's between the area for the garden and the, the community center.
Okay. I don't have that picture. I have a different picture. Okay. In the second picture down?
In the, I'm sorry, in the second picture down, yes.
Might actually be the fourth picture. That's two sided.
It is my fourth picture, you're right. Okay. And, cause I'm going, I'm still not seeing the V. Okay, and so the V there.
And I know this is absolutely useless for me to be standing here with my finger pointing to it because you can't see it from there, but.
I don't have very good distance vision. Okay, very good.
Neither do I at this time of night.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other questions from Ms. Blanton? Mr. Samuels?
Ms. Blanton, and you've had community input in reference to?
We have been waiting for approval so we could go out to the community because we didn't want to say, hey, we're thinking about a garden and then have you say no.
Okay.
So, but we will go out before we put up the fence.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
What we do need from the board tonight, if I bring this back to you for final approval on the 22nd, is whether you're going to pick choice one or two A or two B, because then I will have the proper attachment to the MOU that you're going to be approving. So you all do need to decide amongst yourselves whether the MOU is going to go for choice one or choice two A, B.
Okay. Well, it's clearly on here for deliberation and not.
Well, I understand, but, but if I'm going to be presenting it to you as to, for what you're going to adopt on action for the 22nd, we at least need some guidance.
Okay. Other questions?
I was just going to make one comment. I think the, the city makes a considerable investment in this by the time they, they get, um, a shed and a fence. Uh, it's a very attractive fence that you can see it at Buck Row or in Phoebus, they've finally gotten it up and running and the water taps and so forth. Uh, it's, it's thousands of dollars and, and it will be an attractive addition to this community use area. Um, I would hope that in a while we could have a, a motion to make it an action item to opt for a site. Um, and I, and I think it's, if there are only 20 plots, it's a, it's a rather expensive investment for the city to have only 20 small plots. The plots are about the size of this table, you're not going to grow a whole lot of vegetables in it, but it's, it's a nice community participation project. And, um, 40 plots is, is a whole lot better investment for the city than, than 20.
Other questions or comments from board members? I know that there was at one time some, uh, concern on the part of, this isn't a question for you, Ms. Blanton, I'm sorry, but.
That's all right.
Concern on the part of, um, security, that there might be some concerns about foot traffic that close to the middle school and so forth. Is, anyone, anyone want to speak to that?
I, I know that we had, um, some comments from our Director of HCS Security, and I believe that the manner in which Ms. Blanton, um, described it, they're going to try to put some parameters on, um, where, where the gardeners are allowed to go vis-à-vis the garden. In other words, they're going to be parking, um, in either one of these sites, they're going to be parking in fairly close, close proximity to the actual garden. And the rule, they're, they're willing to make certain that the rules dictate that they stay within their, they, they go on into that wrought iron, um, fencing and stay within that area. So I think that would at least, um, address some of the concerns that Mr. Bailey had voiced.
And do we have, um, indication of where parking would be designated?
It would be essentially the same area as the community center. That end of the parking lot because it's so close to the community center. And I, yeah, again, just as the person who wrote the grant but hasn't done any of the real work in regard to the garden, I would say that, um, that you have similar people coming to the community center and working out and taking part in those activities that you would have coming to the community garden. It's just the general public who are interested in doing something positive for their health and their finances.
And, and there is an application for every person who has a garden plot, so anyone who is there, the city knows who is in those garden plots and who's assigned to each one.
But we're not doing background checks like we do for?
Well, we're, the school system isn't doing, isn't involved in.
They, they should not be, um, infringing on the school activities at all. And we can write the rules accordingly and, and we can take action if they do not follow those rules. From my side, as a clean city coordinator and an environmental educator, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity for middle school students to have an opportunity to get out and put their hands in the soil and learn some of their science hands-on. And that's, could certainly be part of this garden area.
Mr. Samuels?
Isn't the construction of this, um, garden tied to a grant timeframe?
Yes, it is, and we have asked for an extension to allow us to get.
So we have to expedite this request?
It would be nice because the, the grant, grantors keep America beautiful and Lowe's, um, home, what is it, Lowe's, Lowe's Stores. Um, I'm sorry for the stumbling there, but they have been very patient with us and we really need to try to wrap it up and get the garden in the ground.
So there could be a possibility if we do not proceed with this expeditiously, we could lose the grant?
Eventually, I think they will lose patience.
Any other questions? Mr. Kilgore?
Um, just real quick, the, the last time that this was brought to the board was the location that was proposed, choice one?
Choice one, yes.
Any other questions from board members? Mrs. Smith?
Is that pretty well to scale on that when you're looking down on it, that choice one? I mean, it looks like it's really far from the school, which is nice, but.
It, um, it is far from the school. It's directly next to the, the community center, eight feet away from, I believe it's eight feet away from the sidewalk that's to the side of the community center.
Yeah, and that is a rather large field there.
Other, other questions, comments?
No, I, I, I firmly concur with, um, Ms. Henry because of the, 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 um, time constraint that we have. I would support Ms. Henry's motion to take this thing to action so we can make sure that the city and the Parks and Rec does not lose this grant. If we can decide on, uh, what, plot A?
Plot one.
Plot one?
Plot one or plot?
Plot one.
A or B.
Okay. There's not a motion on the floor?
Okay. I would like to make the motion that we.
We'll, we'll, we'll get there. We'll call for a motion, but we're, we're still deliberating. Any other, any other comments or questions from board members? At this time, this item is on deliberation, so is there a motion to, um, move the item from deliberation to action?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we move this deliberation item from deliberation to action. Is there any discussion?
Um, Madam Chairman, I just think that we need to be clear among ourselves that we're not acting to accept the MOU, which has not been entirely written. We're simply, uh, expressing a preference as to the site so that the details can be ironed out.
Right, but the current motion on the floor is to move it to action.
Okay.
Period.
Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Um, Ms. Bowers, we call the vote, the, the motion on the floor is to move the item from deliberation to action.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
No. Motion carries. Um, so we'll take this up on, uh, no, we already did action, so we'll take, uh, I'll accept a motion at this time with respect to this item.
Madam Chairman, I move that we, uh, direct the School Board Attorney that our choice for location in this understanding with the city would be option one.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Pearson that, um, that we would like to express desire for option one in the diagram. Is there any discussion? Um, I'll discuss because I would prefer option two. Um, but, you know, it's certainly the will of the board. I would, in my assessment of the situation, the garden would be more appropriately placed on the other side of the, um, uh, the community center. I, um, have still some reservations with regard to the traffic issues that it could potentially present, um, with the school ingress and egress of parents and families, uh, and also, um, um, just the proximity of it being right next door to the school. My preference would be for it to be on the opposite side of the grounds. Uh, any other discussion? Mr. Kilgore?
Um, yeah. Um, although huge supporter of the community gardens, um, I, I have to say that concerns from the head of our security, um, trumps my desire. So if, if I would support anything, it would be the, uh, option two versus option one.
Any other discussion?
Do we know for sure that there were issues with security where this is now that far away or with the choice one, I guess?
There were, there were concerns raised with the original proposal.
Yeah. I remember the original, it looked like it was actually like way up close the other way, so I was thinking that having it over the other way might have alleviated that concern, but I'm not sure.
That's why.
Other comments or, um, questions? Any other deliberation?
Will it assist Mrs. Smith to understand that I believe the original, um, the original rectangle was going across the, almost the entire front of the parking lot? Am I making sense?
Right, exactly.
And the, um, option one, which is now being offered, is, is apparently being that rectangle is going, um, parallel all the way back with the building.
Yeah, it's like they rotated it 90 degrees to get it.
Correct. So there will be far less, um, frontage on the, um, on the parking lot.
Right, exactly. So then you can sort of make the parking further towards the community center versus how they had it before, you'd park right where all the visitors park and right where all the.
And, and, and I, I do not know that the, um, this change in angle has not, has not been shown to, um, Mr. Bailey.
It would be very helpful if we, we had his input on this shift. Because I agree, if it's a security concern, you know, that's.
I wasn't here at the last meeting. Do you know what his concerns were in regard to security?
He didn't speak in, in the public meeting on, on it, so, um, some members may be aware, some may not be aware, um, and I, I, quite honestly. And I quite honestly didn't know this was going to be moved forward to action, so I reviewed that particular document this week. So I'm sorry, I can't share specifics with anyone. Any other questions or comments?
It would be an ultimate vote, again, on the understanding as drawn up, which would give some time to be sure of any questions before then. We're not voting to accept the MOU.
Well, we're voting on option one or option two.
Right.
So if there, are there any additional comments or deliberation with regard to the motion on the floor, which is to move forward with the completion of the MOU for option one diagram? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
No.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
No.
Ms. Parliamentarian?
If it's a tie, it fails.
Thank you.
If we do get input from the changes that, you know, I'd be willing to consider it again, but...
That we can do.
I don't know if we can get that input from...
That we absolutely can do.
That would be great.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Blanton. It's not that we're anti-garden. Just we have other parts of our decision that we have to weigh as well and would certainly support potentially if we have some additional information, so. Anything further on the MOU? We move on now to item 7.02, which is the revision of school board policies, BBFA and GBACB, Conflicts of Interest and Disclosure of Economic Interests. Any deliberation, any questions, any comments? There being none, we'll move on to item 7.03, which is the revision of school board policy CLA, Reporting Acts of Violence and Substance Abuse. Any comments or deliberative statements, questions from board members? There being none, local plan for the education of the gifted, that's item 7.04. We had a presentation quite detailed by Ms. Grillo earlier tonight. Are there any questions or additional deliberation on that particular presentation? There being none, we'll move on to our final item for deliberation, which is the purchase contract Hampton City Schools. We've all had an opportunity to review that contract. Ms. Reeves, do you have anything further to provide the board regarding this contract?
No, I'm certainly available to answer any questions. The particulars obviously have been provided to the board in closed session, and this does need to continue that way because this is a purchase contract only. We haven't gotten to the actual adoption or deed stage at this point, but we need to, because the seller has signed, you have under your, this particular contract, 10 days to ratify it, and so that's why...
I don't think your microphone is on.
I'm just not speaking. You have 10 days to ratify the contract that the seller, the seller has signed as of yesterday, so that's why it's on for tonight for your deliberation. And it would be respectfully requested that you move it up to action if you're so inclined because we do only have that 10-day period. Your next meeting because of graduations is not going to be till the 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Any questions regarding the purchase contract? Is there a motion to move the item forward to action?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Samuels. I'm going to take that as a second since you were the second, so moved, if that's okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you call the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye, motion carries.
Moving on to items for information, the next meeting of this school board will be held on June 22nd. I'm sorry? Did I miss something?
We now need to vote on it.
Thank you. It felt voted upon, I don't know. Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
We need to move.
We need to move.
There was a motion.
No, there was a motion to move it, so...
We moved it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion to move the item to action, pardon me.
So now we need a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the purchase contract as presented to the board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase contract for Hampton City Schools' bus lot. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Reeves, for drawing me back to that item. I was just a little excited that we were near the end of our meeting tonight. The next meeting of this school board will be on June 22nd at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street.
Dr. Smith, any other items for information?
No further business, Madam Chair, from the superintendent.
Thank you. Any other informational items from members of the board? Or, Mr. Perry?
I do want to say something. Since I got the awards night and all that, I wanted to say how grateful I am to the school board for this entire year. It's been an honor serving on the board with all of y'all. It's been great listening to how policies and all I get made affecting them, getting the students' input. I know there's been a lot of controver, I'm trying to think of the word, controversial topics and all that throughout the year. Two were just introduced, or two were just mentioned today, the changing of the name and the gentleman who mentioned transgender and all that, these topics that are very hard to pick sides on and all that. And about the school name change and all that, if we're going to deliberate on it anymore on any further meetings, we, I will gather, you know, some stuff because I do have my own opinion, but it's not just me, it's everyone's, a member of the schools. And there was a lot of, we are stakeholders and all that. Unfortunately, it's not, no offense to any of y'all, it's the students who are the stakeholders in the name change and all that. They're the ones going to the school, learning that, and you've got to remember elementary schools and all that, they don't understand any of this. They don't understand the name changing, what that name actually means of their school. So that's what makes it such a difficult topic. But going back to what I was saying, thank you all for this year and all that. It's been really great and we'll all meet again on the 22nd.
Absolutely. Thank you, Thomas, for your comments. And I think, as was stated a little bit earlier, we will deliberate as a board on the 22nd, so if you want to provide us any additional student feedback, we'd be delighted to have that from you for sure. Any other business to come before this board? And Thomas Perry, we thank you very much for your service to the board. We've enjoyed both you and Sierra Lewis this year and the great input that you've provided to us, but we'd be delighted to hear more from you before the 22nd. I know you're going to graduate on the 16th, so...
I'll be here.
Don't forget about us.
No.
If there's nothing further to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.